Everybody, I want to introduce you to Sean Cronin. He's going to be helping us over the next few years with our budget. Brian, who chairs the Budget Committee, wanted to meet Sean. And I know the Council wanted to meet him, so he's going to fill us in on what his role is. I'm going to have Brian say a few words in a minute. But we're still working on the budget, so it'd be unfair for us to ask any budget questions at this point. I know the mayor and his team and Sean are working on trying to get something to us by June 1st, which is, in my opinion, light years ahead of where we've been in the past. So, with that being said, I'm going to have Brian say a few words and then we'll turn it over to Sean.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just wanted to bring this out to the Council as a whole, being that we are starting our budget deliberations, working with the Department Heads, seeing what the needs are before the Council over the next several weeks. And we thought it would be very good to sort of hear from our Fiscal Stability Officer, Mr. Cronin, from the Department of Revenue, to give us a presentation about what his role is with the city, how he's working closely with us in the mayor's office, and Mr. Karen, Mrs. Spencer, and other stakeholders, to help us manage our budget in FY19. So, we'll have question and answers at the end of his presentation if you do so want to partake. But again, it's very fluid, and we're beginning this process, again, as Council President Seif said, we look at this as sort of an informative session, a meet and greet, if you will, where we get to meet Mr. Cronin and see the good work that he's about to present to us. And, you know, we'll have some follow-up accordingly. But thank you for joining him, Mr. Cronin. It's a pleasure to meet you.
You too.
And we see you, and we look forward to our partnership going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, I do have a presentation. It's, don't worry, I'm not going to go through it letter by letter because it is a little bit long. But first thing I wanted to do was just introduce myself. So, I'm Sean Cronin. I am the Senior Deputy Commissioner for Local Services. Local Services is a piece of the Department of Revenue. So, you're probably familiar with us. We certify your tax rate, approve free cash, make sure your property values are done according to statute and all that good stuff. But prior to coming back to the state, I've been there three years now. I was the deputy town administrator in Brookline for 17 years. So, I've pretty much doing all public budget in my whole career. Prior to that, I did state work for then-Secretary A&amp;F Baker. So, my, you know, my specialty, what I do, is municipal finance, long-range financial planning, capital planning. You know, that's what I had done in Brookline, and talked about that a little bit, little bit here. So, what I want to start with a bit is just talking about what the legislation does and what it doesn't do. It's called a Fiscal Stability Officer for a reason. I'm not a receiver. You know, if you look at mass, the history of state oversight in Massachusetts, there's different models of it. There's been overseers, fiscal stability officers, receivers, control boards. It depends on what the situation is and, you know, who's in office at the time, et cetera. So, this is a fiscal stability officer, and you see it's a lot of recommending, opining. It's not, I have no control, so to speak. I play a similar role in Lawrence. I'm the overseer, fiscal overseer, in Lawrence. And in that role, I do have the authority to reject certain things, you know, contracts in excess of one year. I can actually reject a budget if it's not done fiscally prudent. So, it's a little bit different here, so it's a lot more, I think, consulting than it is, you know, kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down thing. So, the legislation, Section 9 is the deficit financing piece. So, the city has the ability to deficit finance up to $14 million over a two-year period. You've already borrowed 9.5, so there's 4.5 left. And you can see what the terms are there. It can't be, the note can't be for more than 10 years. In the box, I just want you to look at. I don't know if you've seen anything like that yet. Those are estimates for what the principal and interest payment's going to be on the notes. So, the first one's already been issued. The second one will be issued sometime in the fall-ish, once you set your budget. So, the way I look at that, if I were putting a budget together, that's $1 million in the first year that I don't have for some other operating need, because now I've got to service the deficit note, both payback the principal and the interest. And if you look in years two and beyond, it's $1,700,000. Those are estimated numbers. The interest rate's going to fluctuate, and the structure of the debt might be different. But that's a good ballpark of what the impact on your operating budget is for those notes. Section 10, there's a number of reporting requirements. I think the takeaway from this is before your tax rate can be certified by DLS, there's three things that have to be done. One, you've got to submit a pro forma, what's called the tax recap. I'm sure you've seen it. That's basically the formal document that you submit to the state. So, you've got to do a pro forma, which means it comes before so that we can make sure that it's actually balanced. We've got to see the budget that's approved by the mayor, and then the budget that's, well, submitted by the mayor, and then the budget that's approved by the council. Another thing the city needs to do, and this is different, other communities don't have to do that, but this is part of the legislation. We can't certify a tax rate until an audit from the prior year has been done. So, we want to see the, your independent auditor complete their work prior to us submitting a tax rate. And then the third major thing is, we want the balance sheet to be submitted and free cash to be submitted prior to any tax rate being set. So, we're going to have the independent financials. We're going to have the city's balance sheet that's submitted by the comptroller, and certify free cash prior to setting the tax rate. Again, that's different than other communities, but that was what was written into the legislation as part of the reporting, and basically in return for the ability to deficit finance. Couple of other things, quarterly reports, 30 days after each quarter close, got to come to us so that we can look at them. And then, any other debt that the city's thinking about issuing has to be, not approved, but it's got to be run by us so that we can see how that fits in to the big picture. So, those are the reporting requirements. Section 12 establishes a supplemental reserve fund to ensure fiscal stability. It's basically a stabilization fund that you can use during the course of the year, but you have to replenish it the next fiscal year, okay? And it, the statute lays out the amounts that you've got to put in it. The first year, it's one-quarter of a percent of your total budget. It's called the amount to be raised. That's your total budget, basically. So, for '19, it's about $850,000. Then the next year, it goes up to a half a point, which is about 1.7. That number will obviously change as your budget grows. That number will grow since it's a percent. Third year will be 0.75 percent. And the last year, through the notes being paid off, it's 1 percent. So, by that fiscal '22, you'll have a three-and-a-half-ish million-dollar reserve on your books, and that will help you for during the course of the year if anything comes up. But it also helps you with cash flow, which is really one of the more important things. That's sitting there for you for cash flow purposes. In terms of putting the money in the fund, it doesn't require appropriation. It's mandated. So, when the assessors submit the recap and you approve, you know, whatever, I admit, I'm more used to town meeting formal government than city council. Whatever is that you approve, that money will be accounted for in there. So, when you're doing your budget, you've got to make sure that your total revenues cover not just the expenditures being shown to you, but also that reserve each year. It can be used, you vote it upon letter recommendation from the mayor. So, that's the only way it can be spent. Mayor recommends it, and you approve it. And then, again, the next year, you have to fund it, but if you have money left over, using made-up numbers, say you've got $300,000 left at the end of '19. For fiscal '20, if you need 1.7, you can use that 1.3 toward it, so you need to raise 1.4. So, it's a fund that stays in there, and it will, and it needs to be in those dollars amount at the beginning of each fiscal year. The Fiscal Stability Officer, so there's a lot in here. This is a copy-and-paste job from the statute. I'm not going to read through it all, just a couple of highlights. I recommend, as I said earlier, there's a lot of recommending in here, and that was done intentionally. So, I'll spend a fair amount of time with the mayor and the city council, school committee as needed, to talk about fiscal policies. I'll work with the mayor's fiscal team on development budgets and talking about fiscal policies, which I'll talk about at the end. I've already started getting some insight as to the departmental needs for fiscal '19. So, I had my first meeting with the mayor and his team last week, so I will be part of the budget development process. This one's important, the Roman numeral five. Any contracts or obligations in excess of one year, I need to report on. So, the way I interpret that is I will put in writing my thoughts, and whoever's the approving body can throw it in the trash, or they can say, "Yeah, that makes sense. I don't think we should do that, or I think we should move forward with that." With one exception, collective bargaining contracts under 150E, so I don't have any opinion on those. You'll see in another piece that I do, but at this point, if a contract were to come before the council and money was already in the budget for it, I don't weigh in on it. However, further down in here, you'll see, and I think it's Roman numeral seven, yeah, so if there's a supplemental appropriation that's needed to cover a collective bargaining agreement, I write an opinion. I provide an overview of whether or not, you know, I think that that's, that makes sense to do or not. I provide written overviews on the budget submitted by the mayor, any supplemental budget requests, any transfers, whether it's from one department to another or within departments or from the reserve fund. And I already gave on the comptroller something. I think you have transfers before you tonight. I put in writing my thoughts on those. Again, if they're not binding, they're my thoughts. I also got to do a quarterly report to the Ways and Means Chairman of the Legislature, the House and the Senate, and also to Secretary of A&amp;F. So, there's some other pieces in there. Again, I can actually waive the supplemental fund requirements, as we just talked about. If there's other positive things going on in the financials that indicate that you wouldn't need that, you know, if you had a record free cash, it might not make sense to have both the free cash level and have a reserve fund like that. But, you know, we'll take that if that were to ever happen. So, there's some other little bits and pieces in there, but what I really want to stress again is, I'm not approving budgets before you. That's not the role of the Fiscal Stability Officer. On page eight, the first bullet, I do want to highlight. The legislation gave me the ability to ask for up to $100,000 in the budget for outside consulting. So, I thought it would make sense to bring on a consultant to help, say, build a capital plan, or do a full-blown energy efficiency audit to see if there's money to be saved, or, you know, whatever the issue might be, that I have the ability to get those funds in the budget. And then, I think, if, well, it should be really important, it was the last bullet on page eight. So, it's after July 1st of 2020. It's up to the Secretary of A&amp;F to make the determination of whether or not to eliminate the position of Fiscal Stability Officer. So, right now, it's Secretary Heffernan. If he were there on July 2nd, 2020, and he thought that it made sense because of a lot of progress had been made, he would make the recommendation to terminate the position of Fiscal Stability Officer. So, that's sort of the quote-unquote "out" clause of the legislation. So, I do want to talk a little bit about, because I did spend time over the last couple years, 18, 24 months, with Peter, Karen, on your budget, because we couldn't set your tax rate. And you were one of the few communities in the state that we couldn't do that for. So, I needed to get a better understanding. You know, at my level, I don't normally get involved, but it got to the level where it was the only community in the state where couldn't submit a balanced budget, couldn't submit a balance sheet that made sense. So, you know, we got to the point where I was having some good discussions with Peter about what was going on. I'm sure you're familiar with most of this. If you want to get in depth in this, in the details a little bit, certainly can do that when we're done. But obviously, the inability to meet net school spending was, if not the biggest, one of the biggest issues that caused you to be where you're at now fiscally. The other one is your health insurance trust fund deficits. I could talk about health insurance for all night. The city needs to do something with health insurance. For the last few years, and you'll see a slide in here, the revenue's going in, meaning what you appropriated as the appropriating body and what employees pay out of their paycheck was not enough money to cover claims. And that didn't happen once, and it didn't happen twice. It happened year after year after year. That's a problem. Those, that needs to be stabilized, and I hope that the fiscal '19 budget will do that. Collective bargaining increases. So, employee contracts were approved with no money to fund the contracts. So, what ended up happening was, during the course of the year, the department said, "Okay, now you can't spend anything else. You've got to fund these contracts." Well, let's go raid that reserve and that reserve and that reserve. So, what do you got at the end of the year? No reserves to fund these contracts. You know, my big thing is thinking long-term and not just making a decision for that day or for that, even for that fiscal year, you know, especially collective bargaining. It's one of the most powerful things the city council has, is weighing in on whether or not this collective bargaining agreement is both fair to the taxpayers and to the employees. And I can't stress that enough. I talked to a new city council's forum back in the fall, I think it was, out in Ashland. And, you know, to me, that's, you know, obviously approving a budget, I think, is the most important thing, but also weighing in on, not weighing in on, approving or not approving contracts. You have the ability to say no to funding to it. So, if you don't think it makes sense, don't vote it. And if you have a long-range financial model, that's what you should be using to determine whether or not it makes sense for you as a community to fund that. You also use free cash to balance a budget. That's like one, maybe first or second in the top 10 not-to-do lists in municipal finance. Free cash should not be viewed as an ongoing revenue stream. It can fluctuate wildly, and you'll see a graph in a few minutes. Don't use it to balance your operating budget. When I was in Brookline, what we did is we used it for one-time expenses. We used it as part of our capital plan for Pago Capital, police cruisers, fire trucks, smallish park projects, et cetera. We also used it to fill up statutory, special reserves that we had set up. We also used it to augment our pension and OPEB funding. So, we didn't use it to pay for new salaries. We used it to pay for one-time expenses, because if it's not there the next year, the expense goes away as well. No-long-term financial planning. Through the state's Community Compact Program, we gave the city a grant, UHI, PFM. They came in and did what I consider an unbelievable job of developing a model. It's pretty complicated to use, but it's a really powerful tool. I really hope whoever the next CFO is really gets used to that pretty quickly. And then you underfunded accounts, and that came back to bite you. Now, snow and ice, if not all 351 communities, pretty much all 351 communities, under-budget snow and ice. You know, it's one of those things, because it's the only, statutorily, it's the only account that you can run a deficit in, but, you know, you're way off. You know, $1,008,000 you need to raise in the snow in next fiscal year for last year's snow and ice. And also, things like fire overtime. I think you transferred $1 million bucks, give or take, to cover that. Well, when you're setting a budget, especially for public safety operations 24/7, I think you should come a little bit closer with your overtime budget. If not, you should ask why, I'm sure you have, but why the overtime expenditures were so high. So, just to show the end result of some of those things, so, you know, I look at a bunch of metrics, just like any, you know, bond rating analyst would look at, you know, what are the key drivers, what are the key metrics here? So, you look at fund balance, right? That's probably the most important one you've got. And you can see, just looking at unassigned fund balance, so I'm in the top-left graph, unassigned fund balance. You know, you had some pretty good levels, up to 20-plus million dollars in fiscal '12. You're now down below $5 million, okay? Free cash should mirror fund balance, because free cash is a Massachusetts thing. It's a more conservative calculation of fund balance, so they should mirror each other. Free cash is normally lower, but if your fund balance is going down, your free cash is going to go down. So, where were you at the end of fiscal '17? You were just about $1 million of free cash. And look where you were a few years ago. You were north of $15,000, $16,000, $17,000 million. So, in a five-year period, you went from that to $1 million bucks, okay? And then, jumping back up to the top right, a very common indicator is fund balance as a percent of your budget. You were pretty good at 10% on a total fund balance level, about 8% unassigned. You're now at 1.5%. So, you got downgraded recently by one of the rating agencies. This is one of the reasons why. Now, this is a pretty basic indicator that any of the three major rating agencies will look at. Health insurance, I talked about that. So, here's the picture I was talking about. So, the city's self-insured, okay? There's not that many communities in the state that are self-insured. If I were in, if I were the mayor or the president of Lynn, I wouldn't be self-insured. I think there's too much volatility there. If you have a bad run of accidents, you know, on-the-job accidents, or, you know, people just getting older and sicker, if you don't have the right reserves in that, this is what's going to happen, okay? So, you had a $7 million fund balance in that fund at the end of fiscal '14. You ended fiscal '17 with a $2 million deficit, okay? So, how did that happen? Look at the graph, simple revenues and expenditures. The red is expenditures. Red was below blue from fiscal '11 through '14. And then it skyrocketed way above revenues. So, the city had claims going up, and you didn't increase the appropriation enough, and you didn't charge your employees enough. That's what it comes down to. You have two forms of revenue in that fund, as of right now, which is employee contributions and city contributions. It wasn't enough to cover claims. If you're on a premium-based product, it wouldn't matter what the claims were, right? Now, they'll come and get you for premium increases the next year or whatever, but, you know, it's something that the city needs to take really seriously, is what to do with health insurance. There are tools in state law that help municipalities make changes to health insurance. If you don't know about those, you should, you know, get a little bit educated on those. I can certainly provide information, or the finance team can provide some information. But this, to me, aside from all the contracts being open, is the single biggest issue that you're going to be facing over the next year or two. And then just touch very briefly on '18 and '19. What I want to do is talk about '18. You took, you used $9.5 million of the '14 deficit financing note. And basically, 6.1 of it was to cover deficits from prior years. So, 2.2 health insurance, just talking about that. Snow and ice of $1.5 million. So, that was the '17 deficit paid for in '18. And then the Chapter 70 reduction. That was because of your inability to meet net school spending. So, the very complicated way that things happen in Chapter 70 Finance, they said, they told us, Division of Local Services, to take back $2.4 million of Chapter 70 revenue, which they can do statutorily from the city. So, you were short $2.5, $2.4 million of revenue, okay? Say it another way, the state budget gave you $2.4 million more, but you couldn't access all of that because of the prior-year issues with net school spending. So, $6.1 million of the 9.5 was for prior-year deficits. So, you're using $3.4 million of that to balance ongoing operations. I mean, that's the basic definition of a structural budget deficit. So, you're using that to cover collective bargaining agreements, COLAs, that hadn't been fully baked in the budget yet, projected deficits already in the '19 budget. So, you will, well, we don't know yet what you're going to use for fiscal '19. You have up to $4.5 million. You have a structural budget deficit that's going to be difficult to get out of. You also used almost all of your free cash. So, A, you have no free cash left today, except for about $100,000. And B, that's in your operating budget, supporting ongoing expenses. So, you've got 9.5 of one-time money, and you've got $1 million of one-time money. There's structural deficit in there. Fiscal '19, we, you know, I had my first discussion with the mayor and his team last week. I'd be lying to you if I said I had anywhere close to full understanding of how you budget, why you budget, what you budget. But the revenue side's easy, you know? The budget in Massachusetts municipal level isn't rocket science. Prop 2.5's pretty easy. You take your levy, which is most, in most places, your largest revenue source, you multiply it by 2.5, you have your new growth. You've got $4.6 million of new revenue for property taxes. Local receipts, I plugged in a $2 million number, because I believe that's what you're going to generate from the trash free. You didn't budget that in fiscal '18. You will budget that in fiscal '19. Net state aid, that is, I believe, the Senate numbers we're using. This is slightly lower than the Senate numbers. The Senate numbers were the highest of the three versions of the state budget, governor's, House, and Senate. And you have up to that $4.5 million of deficit financing note. So, you have $18 million, give or take, of revenue. I don't know what your expenditures are yet, but I can tell you, health insurance is going to play a very significant role. You know, you've got to right-size that. That's way out of whack. Every single con, my understanding is every contract is up, municipal and school side. Unless you're going to get zeros, you've got a budget for that. Net school spending, I think, knock on wood, should be okay for fiscal '19. We're waiting for some final numbers from DESI, but the way that the, and I don't know how much, you know, you've been told about how, you know, how you had to pay back $8.8 million over four years, or $2.2 million a year, that was a negative. But on the positive side, you were, you have the ability to recognize health insurance expenses for retired teachers. So, that ramps up over a four-year period. With the 2.2 getting, hopefully, taken off the books and then recognized in the final 25% of retired health insurance, you should be in a good position on net school spending. But that is different than, is there enough money for the school budget, okay? Net school spending does not mean enough money for the school budget. That's a resource allocation discussion that I'm sure you'll be having. You know, budgeting, math is easy. The tough part of budgeting is resource allocation. There's never enough money to do everything. So, will there be enough money to meet the needs of the school department above and beyond net school spending if that's something that they need? But you should be meeting net school spending. You have about a million-dollar increase in your pension appropriation. You know, pensions is another thing I could talk on that about. I won't. Free cash, we don't know if you're going to have any free cash. And if you do, you shouldn't use it anyway, but we're not sure if you're going to have anything. We'll know, we'll know better in the end of the summer into the fall. And then your solid waste contract is something, you know, aside from employees, in most communities, the biggest contract you have is solid waste, refuse, recycling, et cetera. I know that it's a relatively new contract, but I believe that there's a significant increase that needs to happen in fiscal '19 from that. And, you know, when the budget comes out, there'll be some discussion about that. But that, that's a costly item as well. So, again, I'm not sitting there saying how the mayor's going to present a budget to you that's balanced, but these are some of the issues.
Just ask a quick question, please. The 2.4 reduction in Chapter 70, was that penalty for not meeting prior years' net school spending?
Yes. Yep. And then, just to talk about a couple of metrics, and then I'll, and then I'll close. So, pensions, you know, as a public servant that's been in the system now for 24 years, I think, defined benefit system is great, right? But it's also very expensive. It's a great, great security program for employees, but it's expensive, right? Especially after what happened in 2008, when the market lost 25% of its value. Recovering from that is very difficult. And that's why the legislature actually changed a lot to allow communities to extend the schedule up. Now, I know you don't have direct authority over this. There's an independent retirement board. But what I wanted to just highlight here for you is, look at your funded ratio, which is simply the amount of money you've got in the system versus the amount of money you owe, all right? So, I think about 60% was the high point in about '98 or '99. Since then, you've been teetering at or below 50%. Now, if we put up some other communities or some other retirement systems, which you can go to Parax website, and you can do it for yourself, you can see other retirement boards, this is very low. In fact, you're the 15th lowest out of the 106 local retirement systems in the state. There's a lot of factors that go into that calculation in terms of what your funding schedule is, when's your full funding date, but you need to know that this is a large liability. It's over $300 million. You won't be fully funded until 2034. The good news is that the latest you can go is 2040, so you actually do have some, call it, reserve space there, so to speak, if the market were to tank again. But those aren't great numbers. The one thing I will say is very good, is that the board has made a decision to reduce the assumed rate of return down to 7.4%. Most boards had used about 8%, if not more than 8%, but over the last decade or so, retirement boards have reduced that. The lowest you'll probably see is about 7.25. I think the average now is about 7.5%. Debt, I just want to talk about debt for a second. To me, capital planning is one of the most important things a community can do. You have not just a moral obligation, you have a fiscal obligation for everything you own. You own buildings, you own parks, you own water systems, you owe everything in this community. And if you don't have a capital plan, and not just a spreadsheet that's a wish list, all the departments saying, "Hey, I want a new police station, I want a fire station, I want this, I want that," but, you know, a real process where you get requests from the department heads, you look at what their needs are, and you develop a set of fiscal policies that allow you to fund a capital plan. It can get complicated, but it's not that complicated. And when I, when I did the graph at the bottom, this isn't you, this is actually something I did when I started my role in Lawrence. It's a basic concept, a backfilling your old debt. So, as old debt runs off, you take out new debt, so you're always at or about X percent of revenue. So, right now, I think your number's about, it's low, but it's about 4% or 5%. I'll use Lawrence as an example. Lawrence, the calculation we did was, they were at 6%. And we came up with a plan to get them to seven percent over a four- or five-year period. And they're sticking to that. So, they're actually submitting multi-year capital plans to city council, mayor of areas, on an annual basis that is balanced in every single year of the capital plan. And this basic concept was what we started with. As old debt runs off, don't use it to fund salaries, and don't use it to fund ongoing expenses. Keep it in capital, because you know you're always going to have those expenses. And then off to the right, it just shows, you can see your, your debt schedule. So, there's a very steep decline, and this is net of MSBA, because you, you get one more year of payment from, from MSBA under their old program. So, there's about a million-plus drop in fiscal nineteen. Unfortunately, you can't do anything with that, because you're going to basically use that to pay for the deficit notes that we talked about earlier on. Absent that, what the city could have done, we said, okay, we're going to use that million dollars, we're going to finance projects over ten- or fifteen-year period, and that's multiple million dollars worth of projects right there. So, if you look at the out years of that, I believe this city could put together a capital plan that funds a number of key, key projects. And I, I sit on the MSBA board, too, and I am familiar with what you went through, not in the detail you are, but with the last school project. And we actually talked about Lynn today at an open meeting in the MSBA. The statement of interest have been in, and I believe somebody's going to be coming to visit and look at, look at the school again. You have the ability to finance your share of that project, if you sit back and you spend some time looking at your debt. Property taxes, you know, you're at your, you know, you max what you, you tax to the max every year, meaning you're two and a half plus new growth. You leave thirty grand, give or take, on the table every year. And that's not a good thing, and that's not a bad thing. Every community's different. Brookline was just like this. There's one of the wealthiest communities in the state, and it would do it. You look at, I think, Amesbury. Amesbury leaves millions of dollars on the table every single year. So, every community's different. But the right hand, down in the bottom right, that shows you your override capacity. I know, nobody wants to, well, likes talking about overrides or debt exclusions, but you have plenty of room to go before you hit the two and a half ceiling, two and a half percent of property value. New growth, I know Peter could talk about this probably forever. For me, new growth is one of the most important things in municipal finance in Massachusetts. It's the only way you can grow your budget. You know, in the best form, it's commercial, right? There's not as many expenses that come with it. You bring foot traffic, you know, you bring jobs, you bring additional housing, all that type of stuff. But what I look at, when I look at new growth, is a couple of things. The first one is the top, top left, what percent of the levy is your new growth? So, if you look at fiscal sixteen, it was two percent. So, you didn't just raise your levy by two and a half percent, you raised it by four and a half percent. That's good, in terms of being able to annually cover the budget needs that you have. You see that there was some lower years there, but the point being, you, you really want to do what you can to encourage growth in your community. And that's an economic development plan, that's a housing plan. And I know that, you know, I read in the paper, you know, that there's a lot of talk about some developments, both residential and commercial, and that's great. The one thing I wanted to highlight for commercial, you know, I always look simply at, CIP stands for commercial, industrial, and personal property. So, in your, in property values, there's two, there's revenue, there's residential and open space, which is one, and there's commercial, industrial, and personal properties. Now, you guys classify your tax rates, so CIP pays a higher percentage than the residential or higher tax rate, I mean. But you've got to look behind it, because this looks great. This looks like most of your growth is coming from commercial, which is great growth. But when you dig into it a little bit, most of the growth is coming from personal property, which is utilities. That's your cable companies, that's a, you know, electric company, et cetera. That's great growth, because there's zero cost that's associated with that. But that's not sustainable over the long term. So, the point of this is, you need to grow your tax base, and you really need to come up with an economic development strategy that, that can do that. Because without new growth, not just Lynn, but almost every community in the state is in a much different budget situation. So, really do what you can to, to increase new growth. Then to close, just some closing thoughts. These are more the soapbox variety, I know, but here it goes. You know, local government is a service industry. It's people, right? And what are people, or what comes with people? Wages and benefits. And roughly, your budget, seventy-eight percent of it is wages and salaries. So, anytime you have a discussion about wages and benefits, you've got to understand that ripples through and has a very significant impact on your budget. CFO salary, I think what's being advertised is great. You guys should not strive for anything but the best. Having a salary that attracts the best is the right thing to do. Places like Lawrence, and I think Fall River, and New Bedford, pay their CFOs a good salary. The last thing you want to do, especially where you're at now, is go out for a low-ball salary and get somebody that is only probably seventy-five percent of the person that you need. Special revenue funds, I think we'll talk about this during the budget more, but there are some statutory funds that are available to you, that you should set up, that will help you better manage employee buyouts. You know, when somebody retires, you owe them their, their unused vacation and their sick leave. Right now, what you do is either tap your reserve fund, or you tell the department to eat it in their budget. This allows you to, to kind of live with the fluctuations from year to year. TIPS, I know that TIPS are popular, and they're, they're a very good economic development tool, but you've got to be careful, because we just talked about new growth. You need money now, all right, to balance your budget. So, I know that, I don't know the exact sweet, sweet spot, because TIPS ain't my specialty, but you don't want to be giving away money for a ten-year period when you need that money. So, it's just something, you know, there's people a heck of a lot more well-versed in TIPS than me. But, but that's something you've got to think about. OPEB, if you don't know what OPEB is, it's basically retiree health insurance. Under Mass General Laws, an employee only has to work for ten years, at, at least twenty hours a week, and he or she gets health insurance until they die. And then if their spouse lives on, the spouse gets it. So, it's a very generous system in Massachusetts. Your OPEB liability is two hundred and twenty-three some-odd million dollars. And you, I don't think you have a penny put aside, you have no funding planned for it. You're not alone. Probably ninety-five percent of communities are in that, but it's something you really need to start thinking about. Rating agencies look at, not how much have you put aside, but do you have a plan? Do you have something in writing? Do you have, you know, can you point to a budget that says every year, we're going to increase it? In Brookline, we started with, with chump change. We had a liability the same amount. And we, we had the fiscal discipline to say, each year, we're going to put a hundred thousand dollars more toward it. A few years later, you know, you're up to, we're up to four, five million dollar annual funding stream for it. So, it seems like a long way out, but it's something that, that you need to address. Capital plan, I talked about it, the need for it, but per the legislation, the mayor's got to submit something within a hundred and eighty days of the date the bill was signed. That equates to September twenty-third. Financial forecast, I talked about, but per the legislation, that's got to be submitted on an annual basis, along with the budget. And develop financial policies. And I'll just close with the little graph on the last slide. You really need to have a set of financial policies that, that guide you. It, it instills fiscal discipline, so that you don't, you know, do something one year and then do something totally opposite the next year. You have a set of policies, you live by the policies. That's another thing that the rating agencies look at. So, if you look here, these all come together. If you have a set of policies that says, we're going to put X amount reserves, we're going to put Y aside for capital, and we're going to do something to strengthen our unfunded liability position, you then build that into your forecast. So, you could say to the CFO, hey, what happens if we tweak that from, you know, X percent to Y percent? You can play with that in Excel, and you should be able to put it up here and say, well, here's the end result of that. Well, what's the difference between one percent and one and a quarter percent for employees? Well, over a multi-year period, that's a lot of money. You can see that, if you, if you do that in your forecast. And then your capital plan, so your policies should say, how much do you have for capital? You weave that into your financial plan, so you can say, hey, CFO, what happens if we go from five percent to four point five percent? You can tell how much money you'd free up for the operating budget, but how much less you'd have for capital projects. So, you know, the, and then it should spit out, ideally, a nice budget document from the mayor that gives you, as the appropriating body, something that isn't just a spreadsheet of numbers, or a munis report spit out, but something that tells what's going on in the community, that explains what's going on with the revenues, and explains what's going on in expenditures. GFOA has a great budget program, where they give awards all over the country for budget documents. You know, it's not the most exciting read, but a budget document is really the priorities of your community. And I think the mayor should really think about putting together a good budget document that tells you what he's thinking, or she, whoever it might be, in, you know, in twenty years down the road, whatever. They need to tell the city council what's going on, and then you are able to react to that, because you are the appropriating body in a municipality. So, I'm off my soapbox. That's what, that's my presentation. I'll certainly take any questions that you might have.
Mr. President, hey, do you, um, do you give recommendations to the city? Do you think that we should have a city planner?
Yes. I think every community should have a city planner. I don't even, I don't know anything about your specific situation. I live in Stonem. It's about twenty-two thousand people. We have a little town square. We just got a planner back after probably eight years without one, and now we're starting to see our da, our little downtown be revitalized. So, I think any community, especially a community of, what are you, ninety thousand people? You're a three hundred and fifty some-odd million dollar business. I think any community, especially that size, needs some sort of planning.
Thank you. Yeah, just a, a couple of things. I, I like, I like your presentation. I think this is great. Chair Lapierre and Chair, President Sier, whoever put this together. This is the kind of thing a lot of us have been asking for, for a long time, because, you know, one of the things that I, I think you hit on it at the end, is really important for the city council, is communication between the mayor's office and the city council, which looks like is going well right now, because you can't get a budget, like on a Friday night that's stuck, and vote on it on Tuesday with the gun they had. You know, we've never, we haven't been in that position, you know, with an explanation like this, you know, in, in quite a long time. But ha, having said that, one of the things on here, the new growth, obviously, like you pointed out, is, you know, very important. But when you say, and maybe you're just not the right person for this, but when you say use TIPS prudently, that's very vague, because you, you're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. You need the new growth, but, you know, if you don't get the tax benefit from it right away when you need it the most, you know, it, we don't get a benefit for maybe, you know, who knows, five, six, ten years, depending on how long the tip is. So, I didn't know if you had suggestions where you wrote that, use prudently, or, you know, just throw it in there, you know, with some thought, you know?
Well, I'm, I'm going to couple that question with that question. If you had a city planner or an economic development officer who's well-versed in that, they have a heck of a lot better opinion of it than I do. Also, you know, H, Executive Officer Housing, Economic Development, they, they'd have resources there that could help. And I know Secretary Asher spent time here in Lynn, and he's got a, he's got a good team, he's got some people from municipal government who could come and, and talk. But TIPS, I'd be lying if I said that was my strong suit. I, I just know, you know, that you can entice a lot of development, but, you know, you, you lose a lot of the benefit, especially in the situation that you're in. But I, there, there's people out there who can help you with that.
Okay. I had a follow-up question, which is probably not the right person. Are there tips that, and we've done some here, and, you know, familiar with them, but I'm not familiar with the creativity that might go along with it. Like, could you stack a TIP with, with the tax benefit on the, on the higher end, you know, towards the later years?
I believe so. Peter?
Yeah, you can, you can arrange it any way you want.
You're okay.
That, that's up to the, you know, the city council is actually, oh, the mayor negotiates the TIPS.
But, but the city council doesn't negotiate the TIPS. The ci, the city coun, the way I understand it, the city council can vote the TIP up or down. We don't actually negotiate, you know, the, the structure of the TIP. So, we really don't have a say in whether it's front-end loaded or, you know, towards the end.
We have all the say, because if you don't...
Well, we could vote it up or down, but...
Well, you could send it back to the mayor and say that you want to see it set up differently in some, you know, you want to see more money upfront, or you want to see less of a break, or whatever, that you have, you know, I wouldn't just vote it down, I would vote it down for, and suggest what the problems are that you find, you find with it, that you're voting it down for, and then the mayor and the developer can then go back and determine if there's a middle ground that can satisfy the council.
Right. There again, you know, a lot of the tips we do are under a deadline, you know, where it has to be done right away, or hell freezes over. So, so the communication part is very important, right?
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. I thought your presentation was great, and thank you for joining with us here tonight. Will you be advising on the hiring of the CFO? How, how much of a role do you play as an...
Nope, none.
Okay. So, will that decision of who the CFO is reflect in any way towards that decision in 2020, as far as...
If he or she's really good, it will.
Okay. So, you don't play any role in that?
No. I mean, if, if you get somebody really good, and along with the mayor and the city council, you're able to, you know, put some things together, and the metrics have improved, your bond rating might be, you know, increased, you know, those are, those would be the types of indicators where, you know, I could say to A and F, well, you know, I think they've, they've turned the corner.
It could also go the other way.
It could go the other way, yeah, yep. Especially if, especially if the market tanks.
Sure. Thank you.
Jeff, this isn't a public area.
Out of order. Anyone, any other councils to be recognized? Council staffed it.
Thank you. Could you just elaborate a little bit on the, the three hundred and twenty-one million dollar unfunded liability?
For pensions?
Yes.
So, again, the, the basic math is you put money into a fund, city tax dollars, employee deductions, and then, in a defined benefit system, everybody knows how long you need to work to get to your eighty percent, which is the maximum under state law. So, what the actuaries do, well, they do a lot of stuff. You know, there's so many variables in there. But, but they make some assumptions as to how long people are going to work, at what age are they going to retire, when are they going to die? You know, what's their wage growth going to be between now and the day they retire? And then they put all those variables into a spreadsheet, and it comes out and says, well, based upon these variables, here's what you owe, this is what you need to put aside. What's your assumed rate of return, which is a very important variable in that? You know, what do you think you're going to earn on those assets? Which is, you know, the retirement board invests it, but it's pretty much all with the state anywhere. And then what's your full funding date? So, you know what the cost is, then how are you going to pay for that? You know, are you going to assume a large, a maybe imprudent rate of return, which reduces your liability? Are you going to push out to as far as twenty forty, as close to possible, which just kicks the can down the road? Or do you pull that forward? If you pull it forward, the price goes up, right? Because you're not financing it over as long of a period. So, the retirement board has a lot of authority to make those decisions. So, that two, three hundred and some-odd million dollars is, is the total of all those variables that A, the actuary puts together, and B, that the retirement board makes. Full funding date, assumed rate of return.
How was that number evolved, say, over the last ten years?
Again, Lynn's not alone in it. The, I, I think if you were to do, and I've looked at some communities, retirement boards, if you go back to two thousand, right after two thousand eight, liabilities went through the roof, because you lost a quarter of the value of the assets, right? It's been about a decade since. Community, retirement systems haven't made that much headway because of a few things. One, they've reduced their assumed rate of return, which is a prudent thing to do, but that costs you money, right?
Like, running from the risk.
Because the, the lower your assumed rate of return, that means that revenue streams less, so you, the taxpayer, need to put in more money to cover it. Because the employees, you know what they're paying. Depending upon when they were hired, it's nine percent of your salary, plus two percent over thirty thousand. Now, that's different between, you know, when you hire and stuff. But so, you know how much the employees are putting in. So, if you, if you reduce the assumed rate of return, that's, that's more money you've got to pick up as a taxpayer. So, if you were to look, when, when communities lowered that, their liabilities are higher than they otherwise would have been, using the same assumed rate of return in the past. So, you know, the, they're big numbers, obviously, and the funded ratio is low, it's one of the lowest of the hundred and, hundred and five systems. The worst thing that could happen right now would be another two thousand eight. And you, the, the system does asset smooth, which basically takes twenty percent, or twenty, twenty percent of the gains or losses annually. So, it smoothes out anything like this. of the gains or losses annually, so it smooths out anything like this. So I don't know if I'm directly answering your question, but it's a large liability that you, as a taxpayer, are going to foot the bill for if those variables aren't met, if those assumptions aren't met.
Thank you.
Any other council button?
Yeah, you think it hurt the retirement system when they had that early out?
When did they have the early out? I'm not...
I'm not sure to date.
Well, regardless of when it was, let me tell you what the state did, all right? So the state did something that was called ERIP, Early Retirement Incentive Program, in two thousand fifteen. So I was just on board. DOY, which is an eighteen-hundred-person organization, lost three-hundred-and-fifty people in one day. Like, it was June thirtieth was when you were gone, July first, showed up for work, and there were three-hundred-and-fifty fewer people. What the state did to offset the costs, because obviously if you retire earlier, you're getting more than you otherwise would have, and you're getting it longer, assuming the same longevity or life expectancy, they limited the number of backfills. So the worst thing you can do is do an ERIP or any sort of retirement plan, and then two or three years later say, oh, my God, we're so understaffed in our police department, the fire department, this department. Bring them back because you've just blown all the savings that you had. And you probably wouldn't be able to connect the dots in your budget, but if you think about it, you're paying an increased assessment in your retirement system because it's higher cost with the savings in your operating budget for having fewer people in the payroll. If you all of a sudden backfill all those positions, you just lost all those savings. So the state was very, the legislation was actually clear about how many backfills they would allow. That's why the state's workforce numbers, you know, I don't know the numbers totally, but, you know, they're down a pretty good percentage from where they were prior to ERIP, and that was to pay for the early program, early retirement program.
Well, I can tell you, when Lynn, when they did that early retirement, they didn't fill those jobs. So they didn't have anything, you know, somebody else picking up the slack for that money coming into the retirement system.
No, it's not so much picking up the slack for the money going in the retirement system. You, by having people retire early, well, A, you don't have the money going in, but B, they're starting their retirement sooner than the actuary thought, so they're going to have more money come out of the system into their pocket, right? So not money, not more, not as much money is going in, more money's going out, and you're paying for that over a longer period. So you have to offset that by saving payroll over here. Because your pension system appropriation is going to go up because of those.
Right, but the people that are coming in, new employees, would be at a higher rate.
It depends...
They'd be at a lot higher rate. The people that went out were five percenters, the people that are coming in are like nine or eleven percenters.
Yeah, nine plus two about there. The actuaries will tell you, and you're probably talking about the same, was this the ERIP that the state offered municipalities about seven, eight, nine years ago? Yeah. So when I was in Brookline, what we did is we said to the actuary, tell us what we need to do in terms of not backfilling positions in order to make this at least cost neutral. So it was basically for every, I think it was for every three that retired, we took it, we could only backfill one. And so the Board of Selectmen said, I don't want to do that because there wouldn't be enough people to, you know, there was a pretty high level of demand for services, and you wouldn't have been able to deliver it. So we didn't do it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And they do factor that in, people going out at five percent and paying it at nine. But within all the different variables that they have, it doesn't save you money over the long haul unless you don't backfill the positions.
Thank you.
I got a question. Does the state have the same problem?
For pensions?
Yeah.
If you look at the state's budget, I believe it's two-ish billion dollars that goes to the pension system, and if you look at their funding schedule, I think the annual increase is maybe in the six to seven percent range. That's a lot of money annually. So, you know, if you just do, what I like to do when I look at budgets, all right, you know, forget about the past, how much new revenue do I have, which is why I did that, you know, up to fourteen million dollars, over eighteen million dollars of revenue, but then what are my increases in expenditures? So if the state does it that way, they say, oh, I get whatever the percentages of two billion dollars increase right off.